If you would please remain standing, let's take a moment, have a moment of silence for our troops and our servicemen and women serving around the country and the world. Thank you. Have a seat, please. Okay, the next Village Board Workshop Meeting will be Tuesday, April 30th at 7:00. And the next Village Board Meeting will be Monday, May 6th at 7:00. Give me one second. Okay, welcome to the Village Hall and the Village Board Workshop Meeting, Village Board Meeting, excuse me. At this time, I would like to make recognition into an award, to an award that the village has been presenting for a period of about nine to 10 years now. It recognizes an outstanding village resident, employee, or volunteer that resides here or works here in the village. So I'm honored to present this award, and the award is actually named for a former mayor, Mr. Andrew, Mayor Andrew Hagerty, who exemplified dedication to this Village of Suffering. So as the award would be presented to someone else who dedicates their life and goodwill to the Village of Suffering. This evening, I would like to present this award. So with dedication, commitment, service, community, and kindness are words that immediately come to mind when speaking about Mr. Timothy McInerney. Where is Mr. Timothy McInerney? I think I saw him here. There he is. Give him a round of applause, hold on. So, Mr. McInerney looks a little surprised. "The mission statement and vision of the veterans of foreign wars are to force the camaraderie among United States veterans and overseas, of overseas conflicts, to serve veterans, the military, and our communities, and to advocate on behalf of all veterans and to ensure that veterans are respected for their service, always receive their earned entitlements, and are recognized for the sacrifices they and their loved ones have made on behalf of this great country." Mr. Timothy McInerney, or Tim, as we call him, exemplifies this mission and vision in every aspect of his life. His lifelong work in the community inspires those around him, as he ensures our community remembers the sacrifices of those who have served and are serving in the armed forces, and to remember those who gave their lives in defense of our freedom. To Tim, we are one flag, one nation, and one heart. Tim's heart and focus lies in his mission to serve our community. Tim currently serves as a member of the Village Suffering Planning Board, a role that he has held for the past three years. Tim strictly, fairly, and impartially enforces the codes of the Village of Suffering. He strives to ensure a safe and desirable living and working environment for our community, thereby protecting the health, property, and quality of life for all Suffering Village residents. Tim has taken the lead in beautifying landmarks, such as Memorial Drive Park, the home of Daniel Carter Beard, founding member of the Boy Scouts, the Village of Suffering Soldiers' Monument, Point Park, to be named after Dave Clifford, the Ammont Cemetery. Tim's effort as the lead of the Ammont Cemetery Project Team resulted in the creation of pathways that provide greater accessibility to disabled and elderly veterans and those who are visiting the grave sites of their loved ones. Tim also works with our local Boy Scouts troops, assisting them with Eagle Scout projects by coordinating with the village and county resources to improve and enhance local parks, veterans monuments, and resources for our seniors community. Tim is a leader in the Village of Suffering Banner Program and worked to establish the mission of the Military Banner Program, to help communities nationwide honor and support our United States military heroes. Partnering with Suffering Chamber of Commerce, Tim accomplishes this mission by assisting in the procurement of banners that highlight suffering veterans with proceeds from the banner program going towards, going towards helping those who served in the United States Armed Forces. Tim was particularly honored to purchase a banner recognizing the service of his son, who is an active member in the United States Armed Forces. As a veteran, Tim actively participates in the village and county parades, such as Memorial Day, Veterans' Day, and is an active participant in the planning of the annual Village Suffering Pearl Harbor Ceremony. His participation fully enables our community and our youth to reflect on, remember, and understand the harrowing events that our servicemen and women experienced in the infamous days and the important roles that they played protecting freedom for all. Tim resides with his wife Fran and is the proud father of six children, Dan, Christine, Tim, Melissa, Ryan, and Matt. You got them all? Tim was born on July 6th in 19 something, in Brooklyn, New York, and from '67 to '68, Tim proudly served his country as a member of the United States Army. While serving in Vietnam, Tim was a specialist for radio operator in the Heavy Artillery Division. Following completion of his military service, Tim moved to Suffering and joined the Suffering Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 2973. As a lifetime member of the VFW, Tim has served as Junior Vice Commander, Senior Vice Commander, and Post Commander since 2016. As a long-serving leader in the VFW, he has been actively involved with the Order of the Purple Hearts, the Vietnam Veterans Association, the American Legion, and other local veterans groups assisting in the needs of our veterans who served our country in World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and the Global War on Terror. Now, that's impressive. I think that alone deserves a round of applause for Tim. Tim has an outstanding career with Orange and Rockland Utilities from 1969 until his retirement, and once again, Tim stood out as a leader. Tim began his career with Orange and Rockland Utility as a meter reader and through diligence and hard work finished his career as a gas appliance service lead. Tim is kind, compassionate person, who serves his community with loving dedication. He quietly leads others continually by example, making our community, the lives, the lives of veterans and our senior residents, and our residents are better and brighter because of who he is. He's the go-to person when someone is looking for help, to help our veterans, or when a veteran needs help. I have personally observed Tim reaching out to our residents and employees on many occasions in their time of need. Tim has held many hands and dried many tears, and has served us out to our community, and he is dearly loved and admired by all. Tim volunteers his times in many instances, using his own finances to help others. Dedication, commitment, service, community, and kindness are words that immediately come to mind when speaking about Tim. It's because of this mission, the mission that Tim lives by tirelessly every day, that I proudly award Mr. Timothy McInerney the Andrew C. Hagerty Award for outstanding, and when I say outstanding, I mean outstanding service to the Village of Suffering. Thank you, Tim. Please come on up. Oh yeah, take a picture with the VFW. Additional photo opportunity will be held out in the lobby with Mr. McInerney. Chief Lapore from the Suffering Volunteer Fire Department.
Good evening. Just have a couple things tonight. We need a resolution to declare the fire department pager surplus, the old ones.
Okay, hold on. Oh, this is it, I got it. Okay, I have a resolution to declare certified department pages surplus. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
We need a motion to accept a new member to the host company over 18, Brianna McMahon.
Do I have a motion to accept a new member, Brianna McMahon, over the age of 18?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Alpert, second?
Second.
Second by Frank Hagan.
Okay, that's all the items I have tonight.
All right, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, everybody. So a few things that we have coming up. Saturday, April 13th will be the egg hunt, which will be at 11 o'clock over at the gazebo and the community center. We will have the egg hunt starting at 11:00, and then going inside to meet the Easter Bunny at probably around 11:30, and we'll have bagels and juice with the bunny. The Suffering Street Fair will be Sunday, April 14th, that's with the Suffering Chamber of Commerce, that will be 10:00 to 5:00 on Lafayette Avenue. And then, when the children are off from school the week of spring break, we have some family events at the community center. On April 24th and 25th, we have a lot of activities planned, so we look forward to everybody coming out between 11:00 and 2:00. We have Keep Rockin' Beautiful and Arbor Day, and I know that Fred will be doing, or someone will be doing, a proclamation on Saturday, April 27th, between 9:00 and 12:00. We have a lot of activities planned for that day. We've got the suffer middle school students coming down and a lot of different groups, so we're looking forward to it. We've got a lot of spring events, and the summer is kicking in, so it's gonna be a great spring and summer.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, you have the resolution, hold on. I also have the resolution here authorizing Kathy Mills to solicit bids for the Suffering Memorial Pool Concession Stand. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Police Department. Chief Osborne's not able to attend this evening, but I have a resolution here appointing Michael McPatten as police officer, part-time. We resolve, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffering appoints Michael McPatten to police officer, part-time position, Control Number 0041, replacing Peter Tarley, at a pay rate of $24.37 per hour, effective March 25th, 2019, non pro tonk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Grant writer, Mr. Fred Rela.
Oh, there was another one.
Who's it? Oh, I'm sorry, hold on, Mr. Rela. I have another resolution here authorizing Detective Sergeant Marsh to attend New York State Tactical Officers Association Seminar, April 17th through 19th in Verona, New York. Whereas the Village Board of Trustee adopted a resolution number 27, 2015, authorizing attendance at municipal conferences with prior approval by the board, now therefore be a resolved Detective Sergeant Marsh, who serves as team leader of the Rockland County SWAT Team, is authorized to attend the NYTOA Seminar from April 17th to 19th in Verona, New York, at no cost to the village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Rela.
Good evening, Board. First, I'd like to talk about Parking Lot B, which is the parking lot which is across from the post office. It's in dire need of being repaved, and so we applied for a couple grants to do that. The first grant that we were awarded is through the Rockland County Office of Community Development, and the second grant that we've been awarded is called a multi-mota transportation grant. The first one through Rockland County Office of Community Development is for $70,250. The second one is for $115,000, that equals $185,000. The estimated cost of the project is about $175,000. Tonight, we have a contract before us with Rockland County to enter into the agreement for that $70,250 grant, for the mayor to sign it, and for the mayor to sign it, we need to pass a resolution to do so. So you have that before you tonight to pass that resolution such that we can execute that agreement with the county.
Okay, I have the authorizing, the sub-recipient agreement between the County of Rockland and the Village of Suffering for the fiscal year Community Development Block Grant Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay.
I have a good question, actually, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So you mentioned there was a second grant.
Right, which is $115,000.
$115,000, so together, do they exceed the cost of?
Yes, but once you throw a contingency on there, you know, we're pretty much on point on that.
I was just concerned about, it seemed to exceed the amount you said it would cost.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. The Water Department is in need of a new backhoe. The current backhoe that they utilize is about 25 years old, and when it does have repairs, those repairs are costly and it does break down. It's also shared by the DPW. So Charles asked me to go out and look for a grant for a new backhoe, and we were able to find one through DASNE for $125,000. The total cost of the new backhoe is approximately $150,000, so there's $25,000 that we'd have to come up with, but to get $125,000, that's, that's great. I worked with our treasurer, Mike Genito, and doing the initial paperwork with DASNE to get that moving such that they can begin to execute a contract with us. So that's moving forward, that process. I'm looking at maybe like in the late fall, we'd be able to actually acquire the backhoe.
Okay, great.
Finally, Arbor Day is always the last Friday in April. This year, that is April 26th, and we always celebrate Arbor Day here in the municipality the next day, which is the 27th. I'm talking a lot about Arbor Day because I also head up the Tree Committee for the Village of Suffering. Arbor Day is also one of the requirements for us to maintain that Tree City status with the Arbor Day Foundation. Another thing is to have a proclamation proclaiming Arbor Day throughout the municipality. So before you tonight, you have a proclamation to declare Saturday, April 27th as Arbor Day, and our celebration will be at Foxwood Pond, where we're going to be planting two eastern red bud trees at approximately 10:00 a.m.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the 2019 Arbor Day proclamation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, thank you for all of that work and obtaining the grant funds that we so desperately need. Thank you. Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki.
Good evening. I am requesting authorization to award the guardrail construction on Maplewood Boulevard to the low-cost proposal from Chumung Supply Corp., Elmira in New York, in the amount of $12,976. This work will be funded by account number A511044000068 Parks Maintenance.
Charles, could you just repeat the amount?
We're double checking on that right now. Yeah, what was your amount there, Charles?
$12,976.
So this says $12,976.
Just need to confirm the price, the cost.
$976.
Okay. Okay, so authorize the acceptance of the low bid for the Maplewood Boulevard guardrail installation to Chumung Supply Corporation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And just to be clear on the discussion, it's $12,976.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. This has been a issue that has arisen over the past couple of months, if not longer, with numerous vehicular accidents occurring on Maplewood Boulevard around the curve at, what's the intersection there?
Valley View.
Valley View.
Valley View and Beachwood.
And Beachwood, correct. So this guardrail will hopefully prevent any further damages to homes or property, or most importantly, any residents or people walking on the street, or playing in their driveways, or in their front yard. So thank you for doing that, Charles.
You're welcome. I am requesting authorization to issue a purchase order to Jones Chemicals, Inc., Warwick, New York, for 25% sodium hydroxide to be supplied to the Water Department from June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2020, in the amount of 89 cents per gallon.
So I have the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for 25% sodium hydroxide. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to issue a purchase order to Slack Chemical Company, Inc., Carthage, New York, for liquid sodium hypochloride solution to be supplied to the Water Department from June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2020, in the amount of $1.50, all right, it's a strange, strange amount here, it's $1.513 per gallon. Just how they do it in the-
It's pretty accurate.
How they do it in the chemical business, you know?
Okay. Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for liquid sodium hypochlorite solution. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to issue a purchase order to George S. Coyne Chemical Company, Creighton, Pennsylvania, for zinc orthophosphate to be supplied to the Water Department from June 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2020, in the amount of $8.339 per gallon.
So I have the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the lowest bid for zinc orthophosphate. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization for Mr. Joe Hunt and Mr. William Barrish to attend the 2019 CSEA Peer Trainer Refresher Course in Lake Placid, New York, on April 23rd through April 25th, 2019, with no cost to the village.
I have the authorizing Joe Hunt and William Barrish to attend CSEA Southern Region 3 Conference for Peer Training, April 23rd through 25th, in Lake Placid, New York, at no cost to the village. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Adopting a negative declaration under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECPRA, for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and plug-flow modification project.
I have a resolution for a negative declaration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and plug-flow modifications project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to award the low-cost proposal from Barnett Tree Experts Elmsford, New York, for the tree risk assessment and recommendation professional services in the amount of- in the amount of $3,565. This work will be funded by account number A5104400064, Shea Tree Maintenance.
I have the resolution authorizing acceptance of the Tree Risk Assessment and Recommendation Professional Services, RFP. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization for Mr. John Conklin and Mr. Steve Cudiers to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference on April 10, 2019, in Montgomery, New York, at a cost of $30 per employee.
So I have the resolution authorizing Steve Cudiers and John Conklin to attend the Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference, April 10, 2019, in Montgomery, New York, at a cost of $30 per person. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting authorization to award Phase I Industrial Pretreatment Program Implementation Professional Services in the amount of $13,200 to Pitt and Garrow in Deutsch.
Authorization, authorizing implementation of Phase I of the Industrial Pretreatment Program to Pitt and Garrow in Deutsch. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
On the discussion, whereas the Superintendent of Public Works has advised that the funding for the sewer fund in the amount of, in the amount not to exceed $13,200 for professional services is required for the implementation of Phase I. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I am requesting a public hearing on May 6, 2019, to accept the New York State DEC Annual MS4 Report.
Okay, I have a resolution setting a public hearing Monday, May 6, 2019, at 7:05 p.m. to propose the acceptance of the annual New York State DEC MS4 Report. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wow. I think you have one left, Mr. Zawicki?
Oh, okay. Was that added on?
That's, yes, that's added on. Did you make that request?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
The agenda I had was not in there, I apologize.
Okay.
So, yes, the last item.
I have the resolution authorizing payment number 2 to Valentine Electric for the South Street Emergency Generator. Resolve the Village Board of Trustees authorize this payment number-
Two.
Two, in the amount of $49,886.87 to Valentine Electric, 274 Green Bush Road, Blavett, New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anything on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you again.
At this time, I would like to open up the floor to audience participation. Anyone that would like to speak, please come up and state your name and address.
Joe Maraglino, 65 Wayne Avenue. Couple of quick questions. As far as there's no knock policy, we've been looking for the stickers to put on our doors because some people come around soliciting, and I just had a question if that was going to be passed out to us.
Okay. The quotes, the quotes for the stickers will be coming in this week.
Okay.
So we do not have them yet, but we are working on them.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes in the neighborhood you see people soliciting whatever, religious or whatever things.
They are actually furnished a list of people. When they come in to get the solicitation permit, we issue the list of people that are on the list also, so they know not to go to those homes, but a sticker will also help.
Okay, thank you. Hate to bring up Wayne Avenue as usual. I was talking to you earlier, I texted you, did you say the Wayne Avenue project as far as sidewalks go, is that going to start taking place as far as construction in October?
The engineering reports are being designed now. Mr. Zawicki, do you have a more definitive answer for that? And hopefully, we can get it out to bid by the fall.
Yes, I just got an update from the engineer this afternoon. So they're working, they'll be working on the design, survey and design work, and it looks like we'll have those documents, probably ask the board to solicit bids in June.
Okay.
We'd be looking at late summer, early fall to start that work.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. In front of 50 Wayne, this was reported also, they just repaved the road. A pothole had already started, it's a decent size. We just wanted to know also if the DPW could cover it up.
50 Wayne?
Yeah, right in front of the building.
Charles, are you going to make note of that, 50 Wayne Avenue? Pothole or the cracking? I know the state was out to review the-
Yeah, what I would do is particularly quality or, since it's a state road, we have it passed under certain circumstances, it's not out there, but they will get it and probably just contact you to get it after.
Let's follow up with the state.
We have traveled that road in a decade and so forth, it's already happened to the lawn, there's a little present, it's, they usually do the road.
All right, so we'll follow up with the state.
Thank you, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Jonathan Theodore from 2A Interstate Street, the intersection of Hillside Avenue. Just wanted to point out two brief things. One is back to the roadwork that we were just talking about before, that whole section over there has been covered with gravel and potholes for quite a while. I'm sure our rough winters, of course, have something to do with it. Just wanted to get an idea of when they might be paving it or working on that. I'd had several bubbles in my tire as a result, so I just want to make sure that we're looking into that.
What's the location, Mr. Theodore? What is it?
I'm not sure of the street address. It's at the intersection of Interstate Street and Hillside Avenue.
Okay.
And Woodland Road is on the other side. Same spot, same intersection. I brought this up several years ago, but unfortunately, never really followed up on it. I believe a four-way stop sign is really important over there because just the angle of the hill going down, and people who are not from the area tend to speed up and down that road, and because there's no stop sign there, and there's children there waiting for the bus, riding their bikes around, I'd like to know if there's a chance we can have a study or a look to see if we can put in an all-way stop sign to maybe prevent some of that traffic speeding on through up and down Hillside Avenue, up and down that hill, coming up from, you know, from, you know, like Foxwood Boulevard all the way down, Maplewood, rather, all the way down through the village.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Matthew DeLeo, 32 Maplewood Boulevard. Just want to say thank you to the mayor and council, Mr. Charles Zawicki, and Joe Hunt, the guys at the DPW, for all the hard work that they've been doing to try to get it a little bit safer over by us. Thank you for getting everything approved and the wheels in motion, I guess you could say.
Yes.
And the only thing that I guess we could ask as a neighborhood over there is just to maintain that increased police presence. I definitely have noticed a little bit more of a presence there, and it seems like every time you see them there, they've got one or two people pulled over-
Great.
-within a short amount of time.
Glad to see it's working. You know what, Charles, if we can make note on Maplewood Boulevard also coming in, coming up from Mawa, is actually no speed limit sign due to that other accident in the early winter. We need to have that speed limit sign put back and posted.
But thank you very much, and if you could just pass that on to the police chief to keep that presence going.
Yes.
It's definitely helping.
Great. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, it's Carol Suffering.
Hi, Carol.
Hi. As long as we're on the road, the base of Pavilion where it meets Wayne Avenue, every time we have a really heavy storm, there's a lot of stone and gravel runoff, and there's still some there now at the base. When the cars come down the hill or go up the hill, the tires spin and that. If maybe we could get somebody with a broom and shovel to sweep it up. It's not a lot, but it's enough to cause inconvenience to the drivers.
Charles, can we take, can we look at that situation at the bottom of Pavilion and Wayne for runoff gravel and sand, I guess?
Yeah, sometimes there's quite a bit of gravel and stone that happens.
I know, I transverse the road. I've seen it.
Yeah. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Carol.
See, maybe.
Actually, I'm talking about Washington Avenue by the railroad tracks, near the firehouse, there's craters, they're not even potholes, north and south. They're going to take a car someday. You're going to have a special hearing on the budget, I assume?
Yes.
When is that going to be?
April 11.
Okay, I'll hold my comments till then.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Mark Lehman, 36 Maplewood Boulevard. I live two houses up the block from the DeLeos where the issue is with the guide rails getting put in. Again, the police department's definitely made an increased presence, it's appreciated and everything that the board's been doing to get that fixed. Something I've mentioned it in passing to the mayor, and I've mentioned it out and about, I really think a stop sign, or even possibly a three-way stop sign at Maplewood and Valley View would definitely prevent more accidents happening when the people are going down the hill. Again, I don't know about municipal laws, about putting stop signs in, it is on a grade, but there's a stop sign coming out from Valley View. You make that a three-way stop, it's going to definitely prevent people from being able to accelerate so fast coming from Foxwood down the block. If it's possible, a couple of stop signs and some white lines, the expense, I think, will be saving definitely property damage and hopefully our children from getting waffled.
Okay, I know, I did speak to the chief about it, and we still are further looking at if we can do that, so give us a little bit more time, and we'll see what we can do.
Appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention one more thing. I know I talked about the traffic light many a time, Washington Avenue and Lafayette Avenue, how it should be a delayed green. Did anybody since the last time I spoke, research to DOT spokesman or something, how to re-time that light when you're coming down Washington to let that group of people go first and then keep it all green? Did anybody talk to anybody since, I haven't been here a couple of months.
I know, we've been going back and forth with it.
Yeah.
Most recently, I would say no, but that we did not, but I'm not clear on if we did, so.
Because I remember when Joe was around, he was the guy that was like assigned to talk to them.
Yeah, actually, I think they initially changed the timing-
At first.
-for the southbound, right?
Yeah.
Lane.
At first.
Right, for like a 10-second, they gave you like eight or 10 seconds longer, but I don't think that's happening any longer.
No.
We'll take another look at that.
You know, get back on them and maybe get back to fixing it the way it should be. This way, alleviate the traffic a lot. I mean, you always have that light coming south on Washington, you're there for sometimes 10 minutes, it seems like. I mean, just alleviate some of the cars, let that timer go. Five, six cars could go through at least, and then everybody could go straight across, you know?
Charles, can we look in that, at that situation again with the DOT, the southbound Washington at Lafayette and the signal? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the public? Okay, at this time, I would like to move on and go to the treasurer's office, please. Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Before you, there's a number of resolutions I just want to touch base. They're regarding the tentative budget. And so to give an overview of where we are with the budget and what we can expect to see in the near future, tomorrow, we should post a notice of the public hearing, which as you earlier mentioned, and you will be voting on with one of these resolutions, to be held on April 11, 2019. That public hearing can be adjourned from day to day until the 20th at the latest, if it had to be. And then there's a, any final revisions to the budget, and I believe that our anticipated adoption date will be April 30, which is the same night as our workshop. And the budget has to be adopted on or before May 1, I mean, before May 1, so it has to be adopted on or before April 30. One other thing that has to happen in the budget, currently, the budget as, tentative budget as presented, will exceed the property tax levy cap, and the board would have to vote to override the tax cap in order to adopt a budget that is over the 2% levy cap. And that has to be done by a supermajority of the board, that is four out of the five council members, trustees, I should say, and mayor, four out of the five votes, they have to be affirmative, and it has to be done prior to the adoption of the budget. So it can be on the same evening, but it has to be prior to the adoption of the budget, if that were to happen. So before you then, I have these resolutions. The first one is authorizing a public hearing regarding the tentative budget for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2020, to be held on April 11.
So I have the resolution setting the public hearing to be held April 11, 2019, to consider the 2019-2020 tentative budget. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I believe, Mayor, there's a time for that set as well? Is it 6:05 p.m.?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have time.
6:05, April 11, for the public hearing.
6:05, that's really, that's very early.
And we agree on that?
Do we want to change it? I have 6:05, 6:10, 6:15.
That's the initial time that we were discussing at the workshop.
I don't recall that. I thought we was on the 10.
All right, we can change it to 7.
What is the rest of the board?
Are you guys good for 6:05 on the 11?
For 7.
For 7, what do you prefer?
It's fine by me. We didn't discuss a time for it.
Oh, we didn't?
It's the date.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, 7 o'clock would probably allow more of the public to attend, given that date, many of them travel back and forth to work.
7, 7:05.
Okay, 7.
7?
Better for me.
7?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so a resolution setting a public hearing to be held April 11, 2019, at 7:05 to consider the 2019-2020 tentative budget. 7:05. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The second resolution is related to that, and that is to set a public hearing on the setting of the water rates that would become effective with the new fiscal year June 1, 2019.
So I have the resolution setting a public hearing to be held on April 11, 2019, at 7:10, to consider the 2019-2020 water rates. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The third resolution is a public hearing regarding the setting of the sewer rates that would become effective June 1, 2019.
So I have a resolution setting a public hearing to be held April 11, at 7:15, to consider the 2019-2020 sewer rates. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The fourth resolution is authorizing a public hearing regarding a local law to exceed the property tax levy in excess of the limit established pursuant to general municipal law, Section 3C.
So I have the resolution setting a public hearing to be held April 11, 2019, at 7:20 7:20, to authorize a property tax levy in excess of the limits established in general municipal law, Section 3C. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
All right, the next resolution before you is regarding the, uh, the grant that we received from DASNY, as, um, our grant writer Fred Rela had mentioned earlier, and that grant is in the amount of $125,000, and the village would be required to put up $25,000. As Fred mentioned, that's a pretty good return on our investment. Uh, and so, this resolution would accept that, that grant, and as well establish the capital project for the backhoe, that, and we would transfer $25,000 from the general fund to the capital projects fund for our, uh, proportionate share of the project.
So I have the resolution accepting the grant and authorizing the capital project for 2019, capital project 2019-006, 2019, DPW backhoe. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next resolution is regarding our Suffering Day expenditures and revenues, and, uh, typically we, we may or may not put money in the budget for, uh, Suffering Day, but it predominantly, for most of the events, is, uh, paid for by donations. And so we received $10,854 in donations for the 2019 Suffering Day, and we spent $13,644. We do have, uh, $2,790, the difference, in a Suffering Day account that is, had, has been established for quite some time, and whenever we have excess revenues over expenditures, we put it in that fund, related to Suffering Day, um, so it can be used to defray those costs. So this amend, this, uh, particular resolution is to amend the budget to increase our appropriations to reflect the $13,644 spent on Suffering Day, and reflect the increase in revenues of $10,854, and indicate that the remaining balance is to be taken out of the Suffering Day fund balance.
So I have the resolution amending the 2018-2019 general fund budget for Suffering Day expenditures and revenues. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, and the, the last resolution before you is an amendment to the, um, sewer budget in order to pay for a, uh, a pretreatment industrial program, industrial pretreatment program, I should say. It is a study in a, uh, Phase One of that study, not to exceed the amount of $13,200. Essentially, we will increase the appropriations for this under professional and consulting in the sewer fund, and take that money from the contingent account of the sewer fund, uh, $13,200.
So I have the resolution amending the 2018-2019 sewer fund budget, Phase One Industrial Pretreatment Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time I, do any of the trustees have anything?
No.
No.
Sorry to interrupt.
Good, okay. Moving right along. Next resolution I have in front of me is authorizing the village of suffering to participate in the Rockland County Intermunicipal Shared Services and Collaboration Agreement for Highway Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I have a resolution authorizing settlement of litigation. Whereas the village of suffering instituted an action against Iliana Negron, Evelyn Negron, EMC, Inc., the, doing business at Diamond Jims Billiards and Pub, um, Diamond Jims Billiards and Pub, S.A. and S.A.H.R.L.L.C., Nyack Porthouse, collectively, the defendants in the Supreme Court, Rockland County, index number 033032, 2017. The village board, the village of suffering has constituted, consulted with the council, and has determined that settlement of action with defendants shall be in the best interest of the village, rather than to incur, incur the cost and expense of litigation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution, appointing James Barry Donato as court attendant on call. Resolve the board of trustees of the village of suffering appoints James Barry Donato as court attendant on call, position control number 0333, effective April 1, 2019, at a pay rate of $25 an hour, effective April 1, 2019, on pro tunc. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, I have establishing the position of court attendant on call. We're just establishing the position.[1738.62]